Good evening, everyone. It looks like all the trustees are here. And the old clock on the wall says it's 6 o'clock, so we will go ahead and begin. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 24th meeting of the North Idaho College Trustees. I've been informed that there are no comments this evening. And so the first thing we'll do is verify the quorum. We have all the trustees on Zoom. And we've had an opportunity to review the minutes. And so are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, they will stand as published. Tonight, we are fortunate to have, well, let me back up. We typically read the mission statement for the college and Brad Murray has volunteered to do that tonight.
Happy to do that on a volunteer basis, of course. North Idaho College Mission Statement. North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities. It serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you, trustee Murray. Tonight, we are very fortunate to have a celebrating success, which we haven't had in the last couple of meetings. And tonight, we've got Ken Wardensky and Thomas Scott to talk about information technology and e-learning. So Ken and Tom, you're, Thomas, you're on.
Thank you Chair Dunlap, trustees, President McLennan, and guests. It's so nice to have this opportunity to have a celebrating success and talk about information technology and e-learning as it relates to really our COVID-19 response on campus. And I think it's, I don't know if it's ironic or fitting that we're sitting here doing this through Zoom, and I'm sitting at home presenting remotely for this presentation. To give you some context on this, things happen in a very short timeframe. I'm a little bit unaware if President McLennan knew that March 20th was my birthday, when he announced on March 17th that the entire campus was going to go remotely and kind of dropped that bombshell on us. So things happened in a very quick timeline. I was on the crisis response team, so I had some idea of what was going on. But when an IT person hears that in four days, you're moving an entire campus remotely, panic does ensue a little bit. On March 23rd, that Monday, most of the workforce did show up to work remotely. And then on March 25th, if you skip down, is when the governor actually issued the stay-at-home order way back for the 21 days. So NIC was a bit proactive in its estimate of working remotely. Through the following 10 days, IT continued to start this process of making sure that our remote workers all had what they needed. And then the timeline here goes into April, when we actually started really addressing student needs as well. And I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. And then on June 15th, as many of you know, we entered stage four of our Rebounds Plan, which brought most of the workers back to campus. And we kind of are phasing out of the remote work, kind of in a hybrid mode. One of the biggest things that made this a success for us is really the the support of IT at the campus in general. So since the five years that I've been here, we've really moved our technology to a modern platform and really provided tools that made this a successful transition to be able to work remotely. With the equipment replacement schedule that the college does, IT already had a standard where every laptop that we buy for faculty had a built-in webcam and microphone. So we didn't have to get additional things. We already had moved our phone system with partnership with Atnetix to a hosted system to allow us to have remote phone access anywhere from the world, really. We had already had the ability that several people had done to work from home and remote into their desktops securely. And that was a benefit of just extending that access. We're using Zoom today, and Zoom's been very successful. We already had prior licensing to Zoom. It was already beginning to roll out on campus primarily for a tie into our IVC classes, but not necessarily to the extent that we used Zoom over this time period. And you've probably seen the commercials for Microsoft Teams. We also had that, that was a kind of a smaller rollout for Student Services, IT and e-learning. And the campus really took to that tool very successfully. We addressed multi-factor authentication. So a lot of times you'll log into a bank in a different machine, and they text you a code that you have to put in. We already had that technology in place for anyone accessing offsite information at NIC for anything that could contain personally identifiable information. So our student information system emailed those type of things. Remote storage was another factor, so that you didn't have to actually connect to our network. We have that in the cloud through Box and OneDrive. And we already had remote desktop access that we use with students, which allows a student to call the help desk. And then if they have internet access, we can actually remote into their machine. They can see what's happening and help them. And then we've really pushed to move most of our services to web-based, which allows internet access from anywhere. So most of our systems were already set up to be accessed remotely. And then from the e-learning side, NIC made the wise decision to automatically create a course shell for every single course that we offered, whether it was online or not. And Dr. Scott will talk to that in a little bit. One of the biggest challenges was moving the phones. So it's easy to forward a phone to your cellphone, but when you have to call a student back, a lot of times you would be using your personal phone and exposing that number for a faculty member. So we were able to basically take a physical phone and then through our partnership with our provider, create a software phone. So if you have a headset and microphone, you could treat it just like in a call center. The difficulty with that is that we had to actually add configuration for every individual phone. And my hats off to Stuart Lowberg and CJ Banks on my team, who created 156 configurations within about three days. So they just kind of went nose down and got it done. In total, we had 203 employees that had soft phones working remotely. And this also included general phone lines too for Financial Aid or Cardinal Central. Zoom is where things get a little bit crazy. You can see our utilization in December was just kind of moderate here, but when things hit in March and April, it really skyrocketed. The impressive number is that NIC generated 1.9 million minutes of meetings, content over 6,172 meetings. If you put that in perspective of 525,000 minutes in a year, NIC generated over three and a half years' worth of video content in Zoom meetings over almost a four-month span, which is an incredible number when you think about it. It also means that we were in a lot of meetings connected virtually. From the Microsoft Teams perspective, Teams is a chat tool where you can actually just chat with somebody really quickly. We did almost 400,000 chat messages in the timeframe of December to today. Actually, yesterday is when my numbers were. We did 5,312 calls, because you can also video call through Teams, and 530 actual team meetings. Prior to March, that number was 63,000. And then just from March to June, that number of text messages and chat messages jumped to 300, almost 330,000 messages. What I'm trying to show here is because we had these tools in place, normally in IT, we try to do a communication plan, training, adoption, before, and the users kind of slowly get that. Our users took to this very quickly and really successfully over this time. Looking at direct student support, we're really kind of proud of what IT was able to do here. Initially, we didn't issue laptops to students, but then we realized we have all these labs that don't have anybody that can physically go in them. So we're able to take those laptops and issue them to students. We did this by a faculty referral, because we know that our faculty know our students the best. So if a faculty member had a student that they knew there was a need, they could refer them to, they could do a referral to IT. And then we issued the student a physical laptop. In total, we issued 45 students laptops. We also were able to allow remote access to the library and our lab machines. So we had about 75 hours of use for that. This wasn't used as much, but if a student needed remote access to a specialized software, they could do that. We also looked at our vendors for some of the higher-end programs for AutoCAD and the Adobe suite. And those vendors were very nice to higher education in the fact that they allowed the student to directly download that on their, on their home machines and use NIC licensing, so they didn't have to purchase that in addition. And then they were able to continue their studies. One of the biggest highlights that I really like is that we worked with workforce training to ensure that all of the apprenticeship programs could continue. Because as you know, many of those students, if they're not in the apprenticeship program receiving education, lose their employment. A huge shout out to Brenda Hamilton, who is just a rock star at workforce training and spent hours and hours really making sure that her apprenticeship students were there. And then on my team, I assigned Rochelle Williams and Neil Doyle to provide direct support. And that was a very successful way for them to continue their education as well and provide a good experience. We also provided information on best places to access our Wi-Fi from parking lot areas. Most of our Wi-Fi is contained within the buildings, but we have certain areas outside that students could do basically drive up Wi-Fi, because we couldn't provide internet to them at home, but we could make it available to them since they couldn't come into the buildings. And then we helped the Student Services start to facilitate online informational video series, which were public meetings that students could come in and get information about what was going on. And that was a huge series that's going to extend into the fall semester. On the faculty side, we basically had minimal issuance of things that we had to do. So 20 webcams, some headsets, monitors, some laptops to student, to faculty who didn't, who maybe had a tower in their office and needed a laptop. We also published a working remotely resource guide that all faculty and staff could go and get kind of tips and tricks on how to work with IT remotely. We did a video blog with our faculty and our staff constituency leaders on 20 questions with IT, which were just general questions about what was going on with COVID and how you can work better at home. And we also, I also produced an eight-week straight talk series, which was just over lunch on Wednesdays, talking about different issues somewhat related to COVID, but also just in general as an educational series for the campus. And then from our call log volume, you can see that the calls to the help desk increased about 2,000 calls from where we were last year at this time. And we got about 2,000 more tickets that were logged into our system. The difference here is most of the time, we received more student requests than faculty requests. And obviously, in this nature, we actually had more staff and faculty request help than students, but we got through it pretty successfully. And then before I hand it over to Dr. Scott, I just want to do a special thank you to this team here. Steve Smith, Holly Moore, Steve Baum, Luke Russell, Brandon Lucas, Jeremy Sada, and Craig Lidle. This is what we would call the essential workers. And these individuals were on campus, supporting everyone working remotely the entire time that we were working remotely. So just a huge shout out to them for their commitment to show physically at the office every single week. With that, I will hand it over to Dr. Scott.
Thanks, Ken. Let me start out by saying I really appreciate Ken and the partnership that we have with IT. We've, we've come a long way, and we work really closely together. And I think that that has huge impacts of us going forward. Let me also say, I want to thank you for the opportunity to celebrate some of the work that e-learning office has done and IT has done. You know, so much of what we do happens behind the scenes. And it was kind of interesting, the other day, Dr. McLennan referenced the Maytag Repairman. And I had to Google that and kind of remember that, because I might be showing some aging there when we talk about the Maytag Repairman. But a lot of, a lot of the systems and a lot of the things that we have put together really run themselves and run well. And so a lot of times we get involved, the behind-the-scenes people get involved when things aren't working. And so from this timeline, you know, what you can really see is how rapidly things got started. And I will say, on March 5th, I was reached out by other e-learning folks that I'm, I'm friends with within our e-learning community. And we all started talking about what was going on. If you look, campus was closed on the 23rd. We already on March 5th had already started within an e-learning community, started sharing resources with each other. And I'm going to show you some of those resources as we go along. Based upon those resources, we decided to keep, create a Keep Teaching site. Basically, it was a way to provide information to faculty to move their content online and had best practices and things to consider when really considering students and where the students were at that time. Because, you know, a lot of these students didn't choose to move online. And so I really felt like we needed to be conscious of that and take a student perspective. One of the other early things that I did was I reached out to all of our vendors to make sure that capacity was there, that they really could handle this. And we got assurance from every one of our vendors. And I will say throughout the entire process, I'll give you an example. Canvas took however many years to get to 1 million users, and they doubled that users within a two-month span. So whatever it took them to get to like 15 years, they doubled it within like a two-month, two-month timeframe. So where were our vendors? Where were we with that? And so we had to purchase new software. You know, obviously, our staff moved remotely. Two of us were considered essential, so we stayed on campus. And it was funny, for about two months, it was basically Chris, me, and Lita that were in the building. And so we always looked forward to Lita coming by and saying hi to us in the morning and giving us sort of like a team talk in the morning. And I was like, wow, we got, we were getting this open access to the vice president all the time now. And it was so nice, because, you know, because we were here, but you know, it's kind of isolating even being here by ourselves. And so having each other to kind of talk to and be around each other was great. We started offering webinars every week. And, you know, technology, even in the middle of that, we had updates to Canvas. You know, the world keeps moving on. And so we had introduced all of these new features with Canvas. And as Ken said, towards the end there, once we got the site license for Zoom, we really moved to try to integrate that, because we did see a lot of folks that were interested in that. So let's talk about some of these success factors. I, you know, I will start by saying that our success story is NIC's success story. So many faculty, staff, and students have risen to the occasion, not, not just us. And I think that we're really happy to be a part of that. I think while we're recognizing, you know, IT and e-learning, I think that there are lots of heroes out there that were part of this. Ken already mentioned it, you know, we had pre-established Canvas course shells, so we didn't have to move rapidly to build all these things. We have a integrated syllabus that's part of everybody's course. And so Canvas has been a way to deliver that information. We had software already built in or measures in place. So one of the things that Ken talked about was Zoom. We have an internal thing that's called Canvas Conferences, Big Blue Button. And it's basically a conferencing tool that's built into your class, so that you don't have to go outside of your class. TechSmith Nomiya is our media playback. And so I'll show you some statistics that are pretty shattering at the end. But this is where faculty would record themselves and then make those videos available to students. And both of those tools saw a huge, huge influx of new users. You know, the e-learning office has ongoing training. We run training every semester. Faculty participate in that training. And so I think having a robust online face-to-face training regimen is important, because, you know, we're keeping up with the trends. We're always keeping up with the new things that are out there. We have lots of robust resources. And I will say that Canvas itself, just moving to Canvas itself, was a success factor a couple of years ago, because it's an easier system to use. Students find it to be easier to use. Kudos to our faculty. I will say that a lot of our faculty are very experienced teaching online. You know, when we talked about this transition of moving to online, one of the things that was important to think about is that a lot of the faculty already taught classes online. And so when they had to move their content, it was very easy for them. And so, you know, kudos to our faculty for having experience. And then kudos to our staff. You know, our staff, this staff has been together for about three years in this whole entire unit. And so, you know, we've gone through the pains of migrating from Blackboard into Canvas. And if you've never migrated from one system to the other, that's a huge undertaking. So I just want to put a shot out there to my staff and all the work that they've done at home. They've been working from home, except for Chris. All of these folks have been working from home, working remotely. And we know what a challenge that can be. So these are the two sites I wanted to show you really quickly. The first one is the Remote Teaching Resources for Business Continuity. And so this was the document I was showing you that was shared to me on the 5th. And I will say that when this document started, there was only about 35 schools on here. Now you can obviously see, if you want to scroll to the end, Ken, at the end, there was over about 440 institutions that had collaborated on this one document. And this one document had different types of continuity plans for different institutions. And of course, at that beginning, it was this huge resource sharing. I was, you know, of course, it was actually too much resource sharing, because I would get bombarded with emails, and then I would forward those to the deans and vice presidents. And it was kind of like this, there was so much information going on. And I was getting a lot of information. And so, but this was a great resource for us to build upon when we went to it. And so he's going to show you the Keep Teaching site. And this is the site that my staff developed, and it was called Keep Teaching. Can you go to the homepage, Ken? So, you know, we, we looked at some research articles. We looked at the best articles that we felt would be the most important, teaching with empathy, thinking about students and their situations, always considering the student as we move forward. You know, there's some good stuff out there. And so we channeled all that and put that into a location that faculty could, could access, if you go to the modules, Ken. And so you can see a lot of the topics are creating a weekly agenda. How do you communicate with students from a distance? How do you foster collaboration? And then we went through all of our tools and decided to make sure that we talk about all the different self-paced tools and how to do different things within Canvas. And if you just click on one, Ken, if you can click on the discussion boards, I mean, Canvas makes it so easy. It's picture by picture, step by step. I mean, it cannot be as easy to figure out how to do things as you wanted. And these resources were available for faculty. And we updated these resources as we went along. Here are the webinars. So we ran a weekly webinar series that was about two to three webinars per week, every week. You know, and I would say that interestingly enough, our two most popular ones were the last three, because we were, had to move testing online in a rapid way. We did adopt a new software, and we did have to train faculty on how to use that software. And that was the first time we had ever tried to train people 100% remotely. So that was kind of a, kind of interesting and a learning experience for that. And then once we had that Zoom integration turned on, we went right with it with IT. And that was the first time we've actually really partnered on a workshop together. And I think we had 60 faculty members attend in three sessions only. So that's, you can see how important they felt that Zoom was and how important Zoom may be going forward. And so now faculty have the choice within Canvas to use Zoom or what we call the Big Blue Button. So Ken got to show his stats, and I'm going to show you some of my stats. And Ken, I won't try to compare my stats to your stats, but I will show you one stat that's going to be pretty earth-shattering. So as you can see, I did a comparison between the spring semester from last year, a typical spring, and a spring semester from this year. And I think the major thing to look at is how many page views were, there were. 66.5 million pages were viewed inside of Canvas over the spring semester. That is for our school. I mean, think about that. That is, that is astronomical. Media recordings, which our faculty have the ability to create little recordings within their class, like, hi, how you doing? Or if you have a paper, you could say, oh, you did really well on the paper. It adds a layer to the courses, so it's not just text-heavy. There's some video there. There's some audio there. That went from 602 media recordings to 1,471 recordings. And so let's get into the, the good stuff here. Announcements almost doubled, which is not surprising. And this is the one I want to say, Ken said they had, let me look at your statistics, Ken. They had, and I'm not, I'm not trying to do a comparison, Ken, but I want to say you had 6,172 meetings in Zoom. We had 50,537 Big Blue Button conferences. And that means that is a faculty-to-student conference. That could be an office hour. That could be a class that they taught. That is astronomical, to be honest with you. I'm not sure, I'm not a math person. I can't tell you what the increase of that is, but 50,000 is a big number. And you obviously can see more quizzes were added. I think that's a direct result of moving to Canvas. And then let's look at our video playback. That was kind of an interesting one for us too. So you can see in January and February, which was a normal month for us. But then you get into April and May, and we saw a 4,686% increase in the use of video storage. That is, that's the amount of bandwidth. So that's how much bandwidth people are using to watch those videos. So you can see in May, May was huge. I mean, a lot of our students were really consuming course material through a multimedia type of format. And to me, that's really exciting, to be honest with you. And to be honest with you, our vendor said normally our school is running at a higher rate than a lot of other schools to begin with at our size. You can look at the amount of videos that were just created. I mean, in April, we created 2,500 videos. In May, 1,500 videos. In March, 1,700 videos. I mean, these are our faculty working. They are creating this content for their students. Once again, 129% increase. And then just viewing of videos, right? I mean, this is just directly students watching that content. You can see in April, we pushed up to 53,000 users, individual clicks on a watch. So I think that this, what shows you is that, you know, the systems were in place. These systems didn't go down with these increases. I mean, a 4,600% increase, that system never went down once. We did have some problems with Canvas and a few things here and there. But once again, like I said, when you double your entire user base within a month timeframe. So those are the statistics we have. I just want to say thank you to my staff for doing such a great job and rising to the call. And, you know, we're here to continue to rise to the call, no matter what happens. I mean, we're, we're, we're ready to go. And I say preparation is 100% the key, so.
And I'll just add that, you know, we, we're proud of the statistics and the tools that were used. But really, the, the success of this is just the entire campus and the way that they really embrace change in a quick way. And to Thomas's point, there are so many success stories out there. You know, the determination of our faculty to make this work, the determination to support the students and everyone else. And we were just literally glad that we can have the tools in place to support them. And, you know, nothing's 100% perfect when you scramble it this way. But even building off of this good foundational layer, as we roll into the fall semester with different modalities of online instruction and hybrid and, you know, all these things, I think we can only get better on what we do if we just do it strategically. And with that, I will, we'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Ken and Thomas. I believe Dr. McLennan has some comments for you to begin with.
Thank you, Chair Dunlap. I just wanted to add that part of the reason for having this presentation tonight, while, while Ken and Thomas, you're, you're, I'm absolutely correct in terms of the adoption. And it took everybody to work together to make this work. But having the tools in place and the sophistication of the tools and the planning that went into this over many years to get here, it really did put us, it does put us best in class. And I think I wanted the board to see that, just on some level, the detail and the sophistication that went into this and those, and those stats and then, and all that, give you some of that. Thomas, I was wondering, when I, when I referenced the Maytag Repairman, if you would, if you would have a connection with us. I'm glad you, I'm glad you, the other, the other reason that I wanted the board to see this in particular is, is I've talked publicly about what NIC has been doing. I've, I've highlighted the preparation that enabled us to be doing this work at the level that we're doing it. And again, that's, that's everybody that's been involved in that. But more, most importantly, is as we're talking with communities like Bonner's Ferry, our rural communities, and even future-forward serving other segments of our northern region that we're not quite reaching yet, the movement towards this virtual college, I wanted you to see how confident I am in the tools we've already put into place and the resources that we have that are putting us well on our pathway to get there. And so when I say we've learned COVID-19, and we think we can do more, and we can do better, and we know we can operate differently, more fully, future-forward, you can, you get some idea of the credibility behind those statements. So Ken, Thomas, thank you very much, and thank your teams. Outstanding work.
Were there other comments or questions for Ken or Thomas?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee Wood.
Well, yes, I, a couple of questions, not for a few different people. For Ken, first of all, can you, I think you had about seven names up there. Is that the size of the IT staff?
Oh, no, I have about, there were seven names on there. I have a staff of about 30.
Okay. And that seemed pretty slim, seven. Also, I would love a copy of that PowerPoint. So when you get time, send us that. And then, you know, Rick, you talked about planning, and I, under Joe's leadership, he really highlighted the need to plan for IT all those years ago. And it's one of our ongoing line items. I can't remember the amount. Maybe Chris is online. I think it's 250,000 that we set aside just to address. Chris, are you there?
I am. I think you're speaking of the Equipment Replacement Fund. That is really unique to NIC. And I would agree with you. It's really helped us create a great backbone.
Yeah, and it's quite clear that this, that PowerPoint was fantastic, but it's quite clear that the level of preparation, years in advance, and then of course, the kind of IT staff that we have and, and all the committed professionals helped us. They'll see all of you talk about we can do better. They'll see all of you talk about we can do better. So that's the NIC spirit, but really incredible job through all of this. So good presentation, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Howard.
Yes. Ken and Thomas, I want to thank you very much. You know, as a trustee, we kind of sit on the perimeter and we watch what goes on at the college. And when this COVID-19 hit and all of the ramifications of that, all you can do is sit back and wonder and hope that we're going to be able to rise to the challenge. And as I listened to your presentation tonight, I got to tell you, I'm very, very pleased. The idea that you have responded so quickly and so well is very heartening. And I'll tell you, it bodes well for the future of NIC because I think the future is more headed in your direction than you think. And you've already met the challenge very well. So I want to thank all of you and thank your staff and the people that worked on this. It's pretty impressive. I got to tell you, half of the presentation, I did not understand because you're using those phrases and words and things like that. But I did understand is you did a hell of a good job. Thank you.
Chair Dunlap.
Yes, Trustee Murray.
Yeah, I'd just like to express how impressed I am with the response from Ken's department in very unusual circumstances. It's amazing what can get done when people are focused on what needs to get done. So kudos to you guys. Thanks for the job you do.
I was speaking with a math instructor last month and she had never taught online before. And she was just effusive in the praise and the impact of distance learning and how important it was to her now. And in parting, she shook her finger at me and said, now you make sure that you and that board don't defund distance learning. So I assured her we would not defund distance learning.
Chair, one other thing, I believe this with my heart, that teachers are now going to learn how to truly flip a classroom, provide the assignments online, support in face-to-face, and help those that need the most help in timely manner. I just think the possibilities have expanded for how we deliver our education and support one another. That's all.
The president's report is next. Dr. McLennan.
So I don't know why that caught me by surprise. I was looking on here for constituent reports, but I realized we don't have those at this meeting. Let me gather myself up here. So I just connected to the last presentation.
Someone has an open mic.
So in the spirit of the presentation you just heard, I just want you to know that the three vice presidents and I met with Thomas and Ken earlier this week to begin the serious work of planning out this virtual college structure and organization as we start moving forward and identifying key roles that need to be a part of that. So more to follow on that. I don't have anything specific to update you on that tonight. With respect to the outreach centers, many of us internally met about a week and a half ago with the Bounder County Superintendent Jan Baer and Economic Development Director Dennis Weed to talk about the transition of our planning for serving Bonners Ferry. This morning, another group of us, smaller group of us, met with the county commissioners in an open public meeting to answer questions and concerns about how we would be moving forward tonight. Without going through the whole conversation and presentation, I would say that it was very, very well received by the superintendent in the first meeting in terms of the spirit of collaboration and the subject matter experts we had on the Zoom call with them to talk about specific educational needs, some of which we've been meeting face-to-face on the ground for some time, maybe not as much as we'd like to, but also some of the ideas of moving into the future and serving that community better. And all of those ideas were very well received without knowing the specifics of how we're going to work through all those things, both with respect to Bonners Ferry and Kellogg. Lita is taking the lead and working with transition teams. Transition team we've established for, or in the process of establishing for Bonners Ferry will include many of those same college folks who were in on the call a week and a half ago and also key stakeholders and community members. So I would characterize the work that we're doing up there as optimistic at this point. I think there's certainly a sense of loss with the door to walk through at some point going away. We will be keeping, as you know from my communication last Friday, we'll be keeping Bonners Ferry open and fully functional through the fall semester and assist with the transition. We have a different set of circumstances in Kellogg, not as much use and not as much complexity in terms of Bonners Ferry, but we'll be going through a similar process to work with that community. However, that center will not reopen for fall and will begin transitioning our services more fully at the beginning of the fall semester. The presidents, our community college presidents have been meeting on a regular basis throughout COVID-19. Initially, we were meeting twice a week. We're now meeting weekly. We have invited Nat Freeman and Greg Wilson from the governor's office on a regular basis to join those meetings as our agenda and/or their interest warrants. And at the meeting we held earlier this, last Friday, we discussed the legislation need to increase the tuition cap. NIC is taking the lead on that in terms of the drafting of the legislation. We, Greg Wilson was in that meeting with us last week and we want to make sure the strategy that we're taking this time, we want to make sure that whatever concerns or collaboration needs to happen with the governor's office happens well in advance of any outreach to legislators. And that the outreach to the legislators is done in collaboration with the governor's office. So I believe we have the buy-in from the governor's office to do just that. More to follow on the details and how that statute language will actually change. As you know, right now, it's a $2,500 annual cap. That cap is about, I believe, 40 years old. We did a calculation of what our tuition was at the time that cap was put into place and it was about $380 a year. And the cap was set at $2,500, so you can see how much has changed over that period of time. The other feature in the tuition cap is no more than, we're limited to a 10% tuition increase in any one annual budget cycle, any one year. If you go back and look at our tuition history, as a response to the economic meltdown in 2008, we had some 8%, 9% budget increases in a few of the years back in that timeframe. But in the more recent future, of course, you know, they've been very, very limited. There's interest from the governor's office in changing that 10% to something lower. And we're going to have to figure out where that looks. The percentage that was thrown out in our meeting by Greg Wilson was 5% so that we lift the cap or take the cap away, but limit the increase for community colleges to a 5% annual tuition increase. We'll be meeting again on Friday to discuss this more, but I just wanted to have a heads up that that is coming. This session, we're going to try to move that forward. Summer enrollment is up. The numbers have come in at FTE at 10.6%. Still not sure how that bodes for fall semester. As we're trending right now, week to week over last year, we're about 11% off from last year. That's not lining up terribly with our 9% budget stake in the ground that we put, but obviously we want to do better than that. The efforts that you heard last board meeting around marketing and outreach have only accelerated and become more robust. And we don't have a presentation for you tonight on those things, but it is an all-hands-on-deck and some of the things that are in play are very sophisticated and I think are going to produce a good result. There's so much uncertainty right now with, it's going to be just-in-time decision-making for a lot of students. They're waiting to see what's going to happen. Is the country truly, you know, opening back up? And am I going to be able to go to my residential four-year institution? But we, you know, we're preparing for multiple scenarios, but I just want you to know that at this point, we're not off terribly, but we're still down where we'd like to be. And then lastly, I'll just mention that, I mentioned in executive session tomorrow, we have our annual or seven-year visit with the commission, Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities, to review our self-evaluation and the committee report that has been submitted to the commission to determine the outcome of our evaluation. And Dr. Burns and Steve Kurtz and I will be doing that. And Chair Dunlap will be joining us as well and that's tomorrow afternoon. I believe we're, again, the result is a good result. The recommendations and concerns that were expressed in the report are recommendations and concerns we share amongst ourselves and we know we have work to do in those areas and are poised to do that. So I don't believe there, you know, I think that the meeting tomorrow should go very well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McLennan. Any questions or comments for the president? All right, I think we have a K-Tech report. Trustee Ben Ducci.
Yes, indeed. We had a meeting today and I have a few things I'll highlight real quick. K-Tech has got a record enrollment set for this next term. They're at 459 right now. They had a lot of applications, actually 480, 490 range, but because of waitlisting and people that weren't able to get into classes and other things, we didn't quite get everybody, but 459, that's a substantial increase and again, the highest number ever. So they're quite pleased with that. But I asked what I should emphasize in my report tonight and they said emphasize that the support is up, donations are up, there are a number of businesses and medical entities that are supporting K-Tech. Enrollment is up, budget is down. They've been squeezing it pretty hard, really working hard. They've frozen all salary schedule movement. So they've taken a hard look and everybody's accepting to pretty much just stand pat at this point. So no raises there. We did schedule our next board meeting, will be on the 26th of August. And today what we did and we're in the process of saying goodbye to Jared Keen, who is retiring. He's been the chairman of our board for quite a while now and he's retiring as the superintendent from the post-fall school district, so we all wish him well in retirement. And other than that, just trying to see how this is going to play out like we are at the college and the school districts are as a whole. So, and that's my report.
Thank you, Trustee Ben Ducci. Any comments or questions for Trustee Ben Ducci?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Trustee Wood.
Just a quick question, Todd, what career fields are they choosing? What had the highest enrollment?
You know, Kristi, I can't answer that, I'm sorry to say. They did not break it out that way, although I will suggest to you that almost everything is full. That's why there was waitlists and why even though we had closer to 490 applications, people that applied, we're looking at about, again, just about 460 for actual enrollments because there wasn't enough space for everybody. I will tell you, there is some room in the HVAC program, I know that for sure. In fact, we even talked about that today and we could use some more folks in that, but we're not, we're going to continue with it, not take a step back on that because that was one of the places that we could save money because that is not a full course. But we still felt if we're A, 10, 12, that we would want to continue with that class. And so we will continue with that class, made that decision today. So I know there's some room in HVAC and there's a few others, but we are, CNA, the health services, they did hire a new instructor there, but they're maxed out there. We may even be enough at some point where we have to think about trying to hire someone else again because that's, I think, already getting waitlisted again, even after adding an entire new section this past year.
Okay, thanks, Todd.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments for Trustee Ben Ducci? All right, next, under Old Business, we have the second reading of the Board Member Conduct Policy and Trustee Howard will present that.
The copy that you received yesterday or today of the kind of revised policy was updated a little bit. As I looked at it, unfortunately, as we removed some of the strikeouts and some of the additions, it got a little muddled. So we really don't have anything to address in terms of a final copy tonight. But what I would like to do is tell you that I had a good discussion with Todd. He made a couple of recommendations on some areas that he was concerned with, without releasing his concern about the policy as a whole. But he made a couple of good recommendations, one of which was, there's an area under the guidelines that says it's, the board should not try to borrow money, solicit funds, or accept gratuities from any employee of the college unless the activity is otherwise protected by constitution or statute. And he was concerned, and I think rightfully so, listening to him, that there are elections where people from the campus may well have an interest, both in terms of making donations and supporting a candidate. So I revised the language on that. Unfortunately, you didn't get it in your copy tonight to add some of those concerns. And Todd may have some more concerns. There were a couple of other areas, but we really don't have a final copy to review tonight. Kristi had made a comment earlier about wanting a workshop that may have some merit. Quite frankly, I would like to have a copy that has been worked over so that when we sit down, we have kind of a semi-final document that we can then focus in on specific areas rather than just having a workshop on the whole document. If you want to have a workshop on the whole document, then we might as well just do that now and dispense with any further discussions until we have the workshop. So we probably ought to discuss that.
Mr. Chair, this is Todd.
Trustee Ben Ducci.
Oh, just real quick, I just want to add along that line, as Ken and I were discussing, and one of the other concerns that I had, and I'll just throw it out there, is that we may have friendships with people that are on the faculty or staff, there may be relationships there. And, you know, as I talk with Ken, I know he and Al Williams were friends and I think they had a regular breakfast or lunch, they'd like to get together, I don't know if that was weekly. But the way that was written, if one week Ken wanted to pick up the check and the next week Al wanted to pick up the check, would that have been a gratuity from an employee? So there's ways where inadvertently we could have been tripped over this just because we had relationships, friendships, you know, outside of the workplace with some of these good people at the college. So that was my concern, too, that would preclude us in our private lives from interacting with some of these folks potentially, you know. That was it, just that extra thought.
Kristi, you had something you were going to say?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, thank you. Ken, I would like a workshop, I'd like you to lead it. I don't know that it has to be on the entire document because there's a tremendous amount we agree upon, but it would be so great to have us all together in person. So this is probably going to have to wait a little bit. Maybe in August, we could do an outdoor meeting on campus and be six feet apart. But I would like that opportunity to, a couple of things just go through and make sure that we all see the intent behind the language and we all agree with the language. I'm all for the policy, I just want us all five to spend a little more time on it together.
Thank you, Trustee Wood. Also, it's two months until we have another meeting. And one of the concerns I have is that as new information is brought forward related to the budget, we may also need a workshop between now and then with regard to our budget. And so maybe there's an opportunity to combine both workshops into one, take a little bit longer. And as you suggest, maybe And as you suggest, maybe in in the first part of August might be an appropriate time. Any other questions or comments related to this policy or proposed policy?
Mr. Chair, just for the record, and I suspect that we have a the way we're handling is, this has been tabled, and I would make a motion that it remain tabled. Until it's brought up again. Seriously, in August or whatever.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to table this policy until it's brought up again, possibly at a workshop, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under new business, first of all, we have Head Start application for additional TANF child slots with Beth Ann Fuller.
Chair Dunlap, board members, Dr. McLennan and guests, thank you for allowing me to come forward and ask for an approval for our program to accept an additional six TANF slots along with the funding that goes along with those slots for an ongoing ability to serve two hundred and ninety-nine children in Head Start now. Our proposal includes serving those children specifically in Bonner County. Our application to the Idaho Head Start Association gave the demographics for that area and the argument that that would be an excellent place to serve those six additional slots. Along with that, to be able to absorb those six additional slots, what we would be doing is is providing an extra classroom that would be located at Harding, which would be at no additional cost because we have an open classroom session here at Harding, and we'd be able to start a classroom with these funds to lower the classroom sizes in several of our classrooms across our program. So in other than having twenty children in a classroom, we would be able to lower classroom sizes to seventeen or eighteen in four of our classrooms. So that would be how we would change the scope and be able to absorb those six additional slots.
Joe, you're muted.
Oh, well, thank you very much. I'm sure that was much the joy of everyone listening. Thank you, Beth Ann. I asked if there were any questions or comments for Beth Ann. And of course, you didn't hear me, and so I heard that there were no questions or comments for her. But I'll ask that again in case there are. If not.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Trustee Howard.
Yes, Beth Ann, these additional slots, are they going to be in Sandpoint or involving Sandpoint students?
So they would be involving Sandpoint students, and so what we do each year is is decide where specifically we're going to do the reporting on the children. There's additional reporting besides the federal reporting for Head Start for these additional federal TANF slots. They ask almost the exact same questions as the Office of Head Start, but we have to make sure that we report out outcomes for the families and the children. And so this, the reporting would happen in Bonner County, in Sandpoint, for these particular six students. Currently, the thirteen other Head Start TANF slot children that we have, they are in post falls, so those thirteen are reported out in post falls. And any year, we could shift those TANF slots to any any center. It doesn't actually move children or move those slots. But we asked that in the narrative for the application that we applied to the Idaho Head Start Association, they asked us specifically, what are the demographics in your areas? Where can you best serve these six slots? And so Bonner County was our most it it was, it just was our best argument for why we need six additional slots. They have the highest waiting list right now. So even though we will absorb all six slots across the whole program, those six new slots will be reported out in that county that can pretty much shows that they could use it the most.
Mr. Chair, Beth Ann, the the motion asks that the program's scope of service be changed. I'm confused by that because I don't know what you mean by scope of service. Is it a geographic area we're not serving now? And I thought in your description you just gave us that we are serving all those areas, and we're just expanding the number. So what do you mean by scope of service?
So the so the that wording comes from the Office of Head Start in when you change your original grant award and the numbers of children that we asked to serve in each county was already presented, and they already approved our our notice and gave us an award. And to absorb six additional slots, we need to redo our center operation schedule and show them exactly how we're absorbing six more slots. And so what we'll do is this, if you approve that we that we can absorb six additional slots into Head Start, what will happen is the Office of Head Start will take a look at this and decide whether they're going to let us absorb those into our federal slots. And then they will decide to open up our our grant to be able to move those slots around so that we can absorb those into our classrooms.
So when you say scope of service, you're talking about number of students?
Right, and exactly where they're all going to be located at. So the full two hundred and ninety-nine children, what they would do is say, okay, you want to serve six more. You have two ninety-three. You've given us this map. You've given us the number of children you're going to serve in each site and how many children in each classroom. They have to decide to open that up and let us absorb those six additional slots and place them into those classrooms and add add the additional staff and the additional children to that schedule that has already been approved. And then they would just open it up and let us change those numbers in in those classrooms, and that would be in addition to our Notice of Grant Award, and they would just let us absorb those and then consider them federal slots. And going forward, then we would report out on all two hundred and ninety-nine of those children.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to accept six additional students?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Trustee.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for six additional TANF slots and to change to the program's scope of service to accommodate these additional slots.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Trustee Wood, Trustee Banducci, are you in favor of that motion?
Aye, yes.
Yes, sorry, thought you heard us.
Thank you. I just didn't hear all that. All right, Beth Ann, you're good to go.
Thank you.
Also under new business, the first reading of the Institutional Review Board Policy, Dr. McLennan.
Thank you, Chair Dunlap. You have the background. I'll just read just a piece of that. The North Idaho College Institutional Review Board was created for the purpose of reviewing any human subjects, any human subjects research conducted by NIC and in accordance with federal regulations. This includes all research with human subjects, including faculty, staff and/or students as research subjects or by NIC faculty, staff and/or students at any location. The NIC Institutional Review Board was approved by the College Senate as a standing committee earlier in the academic year, and the Senate requested that a related policy and procedure be developed, which you have before you. The policy and the procedure have both been reviewed and approved by myself and the President's Cabinet and the Senate.
Any discussion?
Chair Dunlap?
Yes, Trustee Banducci.
Yes, thank you. President McLennan. I apologize for my ignorance, but I don't normally think of us as a as a research institution. I think more of a UI or Wazoo for such things. What was the impetus for this policy and procedure? What sort of of research are we doing, especially in the in the case of using human subjects? Maybe I could be enlightened there because I'm not aware of what we're doing in that capacity.
So we we do, at the institutional level, we do quite a bit of research using survey instruments and and such that we administer to students, but also within in the instructional area through student-led research projects or faculty-coordinated research projects. There's research, and Dr. Burns, you might want to add a little bit to that through sociology classes and other types of research that occur in the classroom. Not a lot, but there's some certainly.
Well, the reason, I guess part of the reason I'm asking is because, you know, I my thesis, I had a MD, a couple PhDs, and we were sponsored by NASA, and we were sticking, you know, electrodes in people's heads and spinning them around and inducing drugs and doing a multiple drug therapy, a double-blind placebo, and anyway, blah, blah, blah. On human research, we're literally making people sick, trying to work on the cause of a cure for, or at least delay the onset of motion sickness. So when I think of research on human subjects, I'm thinking something that's invasive like that, where we're doing something to their body, which, if I'm understanding you right, we're doing checkbox A, checkbox B, submit. Because, I mean, that was a school of logistics. They sent out a bunch of stuff. People answered questions. They came back. They tabulated. That was their research. Our side on the engineering, we did things to people. So so is am I getting that right? We're not really in a in a medical sense affecting anybody. It's more of a clerical administrative function.
Yes, I guess, again, I'll ask Dr. Burns to maybe add some knowledge to this conversation.
Chair Dunlap, Trustee Banducci, I would agree with Dr. McLennan and and with much of what you have said as well. I think the regulations and restrictions about any time that you ask a human, even questions that would be on a survey instrument, it is considered human subjects because you are using humans rather than animals or plants or whatever it is that you're using to do the research. And so by regulation, we should be making sure that the institution is well aware of the intent of the research, how the questioning will go on these surveys, and what how that information is going to be used, how we protect the privacy of the students and/or faculty and staff involved. So it's just making sure that we are attentive to all the requirements related to research when we are using humans. I would also add that many of our faculty, just because of their own backgrounds and and the degrees that they've received, they are invited to join in with other universities, both in-state and out-of-state, to conduct research. And so if that happens and they are using humans involved in their research, this has to be be approved by our institution because of their connection with North Idaho College.
Okay, that makes sense because, yeah, yeah, what I was doing, we were sticking drugs in people, you know. So to me, that's pretty invasive. But but I could see that as an extension where someone might be doing that in a cooperative effort with another university where there could be human subject research beyond just some sort of survey or something. Okay. Okay, well, I appreciate the answer. I just was trying to understand the kind of what the genesis of this of this was and and, you know, why 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 it came about. So thank you.
Board, further discussion related to the proposed policy? Hearing none, President McLennan, we would ask that you bring that back at the next meeting for a second reading and potential approval. Next, we need to appoint a clerk of the election, and typically, we do this annually when we have trustees that are up for election. And usually, the vice president of business is the one that is appointed to do that. And so I would ask for a motion to appoint Vice President Martin as the clerk of the election.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion. I move to appoint Vice President Chris Martin as North Idaho College District Clerk of the Election for the upcoming Board of Trustees election.
And I, Todd Banducci, would be happy to second that motion.
All in favor of appointing Vice President Martin as the clerk of the election, signify by saying aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Chris. Tab four, approval of the President's contract. Mark Lyons?
Thank you, Chair Dunlap, members of the board, President McLennan. Consistent with past practice, the President's contract is reviewed and renewed annually. A contract renewal may be executed by the President and the Board Chair with the approval and authorization of the Board of Trustees. Now, the proposed renewal contract for this year is is to extend the contract for an additional year. So it would be July one twenty to June thirty twenty-three. That is the only change that is being proposed at this time. The other terms, including compensation, are unchanged. So the board is requested to consider a motion to approve the renewing a contract for that time period, July one twenty through June or through six thirty twenty-three, and authorizing the Board Chair to execute the contract on behalf of the Board and North Idaho College.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to make that motion, and then hopefully we have some discussion. I make a motion to approve a renewal contract authorizing the Board Chair to execute the contract on behalf of the Board of Trustees in North Idaho College.
And is there a second to that?
I would second that.
Murray seconds. Is there further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I I just want to take the opportunity, the board gets to talk to Rick and share with him how pleased we are, but we don't get to talk about it publicly too often. It just doesn't fit into the normal schedule. But Rick, we're all so proud of your leadership and the work that you've done through not only just the tough times with COVID, but year-round, and the heavy lifting that you and your staff have done on the accreditation process, the facilities planning, the strategic planning, the budget. We could go on and on and on, as we do with you privately. But publicly, I think it's really important for everyone to hear that this board is just so pleased with your performance, and and thank you for a job well done.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, President McLennan. You're good to go.
Thank you.
Next, under informational items, we've got COVID nineteen planning update with President McLennan.
Thank you, Chair Dunlap. You know, we are including this on the agenda and will likely include it on the agenda as a placeholder for this conversation in the foreseeable future. As we're, the place that we're in today, I just, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Burns here in just a second. But, you know, this continues to be a very uncertain environment. Higher education institutions all over the country are dealing with, we're dealing with much the same things, even though we we have significant and notable differences within our institutions. And certainly, the regional differences are notable as well in terms of what's happening with COVID nineteen in different localities. As you know, we went, followed the state in large part into stage four. As you know, we went, uh, followed the state, uh, in large part into stage four of, uh, following Idaho rebounds to, in our NIC rebounds, uh, stage four. And, uh, those communications have gone out and telling what that means and it's been distributed widely and available on our website and so forth. We also have, and I mentioned this briefly at the last, uh, trustees meeting, a, a working group. Um, I refer to it as an operations and logistics team. Uh, they have, I think renamed the, the, the more, uh, name and use as the NIC rebounds team. And basically, uh, this group is working, uh, working first with the immediate needs for us to be, uh, uh, able to fulfill our mission under the current circumstances. Uh, but notably planning for the fall semester and the, the various scenarios, uh, that are in front of us uh, for what fall semester, uh, may look like. And, and as you know, just from the national news and local news, um, that landscape is still shifting and, uh, there's still a lot of variability in what that may look like. Uh, the rebounds group is, uh, primarily looking at, uh, operational safety and, um, uh, workplace-related, um, uh, measures. And there's a subgroup that's formed, um, that's being chaired and that group is being chaired by Karen Hubbard and she's just doing a terrific job, uh, trying to deal with a very complex set of, uh, variables and scenarios to, to do this type of planning. And then, uh, subgroup, uh, as part of that is also working primarily on instructional and classroom-related and instructional delivery, delivery-related, uh, issues, um, again, among those various scenarios that are in front of us. Network is being led by, uh, Larry Bridge and Christie Doyle. Uh, these groups are active, they're meeting, uh, frequently, I wouldn't say regularly, frequently regularly, and, uh, developing their agendas and creating their priorities. And so tonight I thought it would, uh, we gave a pretty full, uh, update at last month's meeting. Uh, tonight, we're going to focus on two things in particular and one is some data on what happened with students uh, in terms of their withdrawals, uh, in the spring semester, how, what, what does that data look like? And then a question about, uh, so what does our fall outlook look like? What, what are, what are our thoughts about programs and services and instruction? And Dr. Burns is going to handle both of those questions. So we, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. McLennan. Chair Dunlap, with members of the board and Mr. Lyons, um, colleagues, thank you for this opportunity to talk about, um, what spring looked like. And I believe that la- at the last board meeting, there was a question specifically to, um, the withdraw students who withdrew from their classes at North Idaho College. And so I just wanted to review some information with you. Going to share a lot of numbers, but really the spreadsheets were way too large to put on a, a Zoom screen. But if you would like, uh, hard copies of any of this information, please just let me know and I'll make sure that we get it forwarded to you. So just in terms of, of the way that North Idaho College tracks withdrawals, we, we track them in a variety of ways. The two most important things that we look at though are the student head count and that is the individual number of students who withdraw and the student seat count, which reflects the number of seats in a class that are withdrawn. And so for example, if a student, um, if one student withdraws from a course, that would count towards one head count withdraw and one seat count withdraw. But if a student withdraws from three courses, that would count towards one head count withdraw and actually three seat count withdraws. So in the spring of 2020, we had 850 students withdraw from one or more classes from 1,462 seats or an average of 1.7 seats per individual students that were enrolled in the spring semester. The highest proportion of these withdrawals, 51.4% of the total seat count was due to COVID-19. When, when we asked the students the reason, they indicated COVID-19. So that was 752 seats, followed by personal reasons for about 16.3%. And then with, and with those two together, it made up about 67% of the total withdrawals from, um, the seat count from North Idaho College. The remaining reasons, uh, included things, um, well, one, for a number of, of students, they didn't even state a reason, but other reasons were work and, um, other, uh, matters related to their coursework itself. So to compare this to the last three years, just to give you a perspective, if we look at 2018 through 2020, the spring semesters of those years, um, over those years, 15.3% of NIC students head count withdrew for one, from one or more courses. And in spring 2020, so the most recent spring, um, 17.7%, which means that there was a little more than a 2% increase, uh, against the average, the three-year average, this semis, this past semester, uh, 2% increase. Then when we look at seat count, it was a 7.2%. And again, uh, that was the three-year average and this spring it was about a 9% in, uh, withdrawal rate. And so a little bit less than that 2%. So hovered right around the 2%, well, for seat count and for head count. So, um, what we might be able to, um, conclude from looking at these numbers is that indeed there was, um, a notable amount of withdrawals, uh, total withdrawals from spring semester 2020, a slightly higher than average from prior, prior two years, but again, within a 2% range there. The, um, the average seats withdrawn student increased only from a 1.5% over those three years to a 1.7%. So not incredibly dramatic. Um, it's probably reasonable to conclude, although we don't have hard evidence this, but probably reasonable to conclude that the provisions we made for COVID-19 related to their ability to withdraw without penalty, um, made a huge difference for students and making sure that, um, NIC stewardship of students was, um, effective in guiding, as a guiding principle reflected in this withdrawal, uh, this withdrawal data that I'm presenting this evening. I think what's going to be really important is for us now to track of those students who took the, the, um, credit for withdraw this spring semester, as you will recall, for students who withdrew during a certain time period, we allowed them to have credit towards those course, uh, those courses or other courses, um, through this next year, starting with the summer, fall semester and spring semester. So it'll be really important for us to track the numbers of students who took advantage of using that credit towards continuing their education during this next academic period. And so I'm going to stop there in that particular issue, just about the data before, uh, I move on to some fall discussion to see if there are any questions. Okay. Again, if you would like to see the numbers on hard copy, please just let me know and we'll send them out. Actually, I'll send out those hard copy electronically. Does that make any sense whatsoever? I did that for my buddies Ken and Thomas. Um, okay, so as we are looking at fall, I don't know an ad- uh, how to adequately explain to you all of the planning that has been going on for sauce, uh, fall semester. It has been intense and it has been ever-changing. It seems that once we get a plan in place, we learn something new, we, uh, learn more about what other institutions are doing and, uh, we realize that we always have more work to do to try to ensure the most effective delivery of courses, um, in the fall semester in the safest environment possible. So I would tell you what, um, the subgroup worked on, as well as the instructional leadership team, they've been working on it since, uh, March, actually, um, really looked at some guiding principles, uh, led by this notion of that we wanted to ensure continuation of learning in the safest environment possible. And that would be a summary of, of the guiding principles towards this. And so what has been done is, um, the team has developed multiple scenarios and really tried to develop scenarios against the pedagogy, the learning requirements for, um, the multiple courses that are offered at North Idaho College. And as you can well imagine, that is extremely varied across the institution. Um, at one point, uh, from a large, uh, the large planning group that was going on, the NIC rebounds team, uh, we realized that we needed to have a smaller group of individuals look at the multiple aspects of delivery. So it's not just instruction in a classroom or instruction online or a combination of thereof. But this really, um, involved what our classrooms look like, how big they are. And if we were going to social distance with six feet, uh, between every single student in the classroom and the instructor, what does that classroom look like in terms of how many students we can put into that classroom? Um, what technology, added technology we're going to need to move to these multiple modalities that, uh, we are hoping to be able to implement in fall? And how do we communicate with students these changes in motel, modalities as we put codes into our system to make sure that we know what the delivery method is? How do we communicate that while the students, so they know what to expect to receive in this fall semester? So this team, uh, was made up of, of people across campus, uh, many other people involved, but the core of the team really was, um, the two deans, uh, Christie Doyle and Larry Briggs. Um, Gary Stark from Facilities, I'm telling you, he has been an absolute rock star in that he has measured and looked at every single classroom. I think he's been in every single classroom on this campus and really strategically looked at how many people we could actually get into a classroom in a safe manner. So kudos to him. And then Kelly Lyons in the registers office, oh my goodness, she has fought with, um, colleague, our, our system, um, that allows us to register students and to track all matters related to, um, instruction and really figured out how to best, uh, work with the instructional deans and faculty to make sure that students understand the environment that they're entering into. So there's a lot of background coding. In fact, they had to come up with a whole new nomenclature and add, uh, definitions to what these learning modalities are. And, and that will be ready to be, uh, released in a, in another couple of weeks. We're going to have all that ready and be online. In fact, faculty and, and the division chair, administrative assistants and division chairs are working as of today because they got a letter from me today about the changes that need to be made. So as of today, they're working on trying to make those changes in the system. Um, so, uh, that, that's the, the worker bees of who really is making this happen. But again, looking at multiple ways of delivery, should we get pulled back to a stage three, to a stage two or have to completely, um, close down the institution again and, and what that's going to look like? As you know, in the springtime, our biggest challenges were around the areas that had hands-on learning that can only be delivered hands-on. And, uh, that will be a challenge for us in the fall as well, as we move into this, this summer. Um, you heard last month that, um, we started summer school completely online. And, um, as of next week, we will, this week and next week, we will actually have people entering into our labs, our science labs, um, to finish out their summer coursework. Yet, at the same time, we still have students in, in some of our labs finishing out their spring coursework because there were so many hours and so much learning that needed to be done that we are still, um, wrapping up some of our spring semester courses, um, even in this late month, late end of the month of June. So, um, we're looking towards fall and hoping that as we transition into fall that, uh, we are able to deliver as much as possible in the time allowed in the fall semester. But realistically, we know that if we are forced to go completely remote again, there will be some instruction that will have to be put on hold again and we will have to, again, design a way to move that into the spring semester or at a time that we're allowed to re-enter, um, the lab settings. And I think that I've provided, um, as much information I could to you in a short amount of time, but I certainly am open for questions on all of this.
Questions, comments for, uh, Dr. Burns? All right, lastly, uh, Board Chairs Report, which will be very short. Uh, as mentioned, there will be no meeting in July or next meeting will be in August and we will have a workshop sometime, uh, the first part of August related to a proposed policy on board conduct and possibly, uh, uh, also related to, uh, the budget as new information unfolds, uh, about that budget. This has been an extremely difficult year for all of you. If you go back, uh, at the beginning of the year and you look at, uh, the issues related to the athletic department, you look at the response to COVID-19, uh, you look at the yeoman's work done in preparation for accreditation, the decline in enrollment and budget and facilities planning. You all have done a spectacular job and on behalf of the board. We could not be more proud of this college and the effort you have made to make sure that our students are served, uh, very, very well. Uh, so thank you all and we look forward to seeing you, uh, in this next, uh, new school year. Are there any comments for the good of the order? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Again, thank you all.